This meeting is now reopened and the private attorney-client meeting discussion, litigation strategy, and settlement negotiations in our E. National Prescription Opiate Litigation Case Number 1:17-DMD2804 is concluded. Is there anyone from ...
I can stop.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right, where did we leave off, guys? I know we've ... Okay, item J.1?
Commissioners, item J.1 is request from Marker 24 Development LLC to waive Section 6228-83D which requires a 15-foot buffer platted as a common track separated from individual lots. Instead, they wish to propose a 15-foot buffer, I'm sorry, 15-foot landscape preservation easement within the lots along the perimeter, a 10-foot hardscape and landscape easement along the north boundary abutting Windy Drive and where their development abuts the marina, they would just use the stormwater management area for buffering. By the board granting this waiver, it will effectively reduce the separation between this subdivision and the neighboring subdivision by 15 feet, and it will also provide the buffer will be encumbering those rear lots. Staff has provided three conditions for your consideration in approving this item. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. I also know that the applicants are here to speak to the item.
Okay, you want to hear from the applicant, or you want to speak first?
If I can jump in, is that all right? Do you all mind? Okay, so a few things, because I do want to address some things and perhaps nip them in the bud before we have the applicant come up. They've been really good to talk with, they've been very accessible, and have reached out to me on a few things with respect to this project. What I would say is, if you look at the agenda report that was included with today's agenda, there's a section at the bottom portion of it saying, "The board may wish to consider the following conditions for granting this waiver." I've spoken with the applicant, they're fine with those three conditions, so there's no objection unless they come up and say otherwise today where I last left it off with them. The other item that was brought up to me during staff briefing as recently as yesterday was there was a concern on one of the conceptual drawings that I believe may or may not have made it into the agenda packet. It showed some shrubbery in a place where staff had indicated it couldn't be. So one way to resolve that concern, and the concern essentially was based on there being a drainage structure where the bushes were shown, and I've spoken with the applicant, the applicant's fine with this as well, is including as a deed restriction, no vegetation or improvements impairing drainage. So not, you know, not simply as a condition, but actually as a deed restriction so that that goes along with the land regardless of what may otherwise happen. So the idea with that is that there won't be any sort of construction beyond the retaining wall up until the point where they have their buffer easement. They could have it grassed, they could have ground cover, provided that it doesn't impair drainage in any way. And they're also, I've spoken with them, they will also ensure that the HOA has adequate easements to access the areas beyond the retaining wall for maintenance purposes. That's not something that we need to have by any means in a deed restriction, but that is something that would be a condition here. So with that, since I've addressed that, I'll let them come up and let us know what they have planned.
Come on up. Can you state your name and address, please?
Good afternoon, Todd Foley, 53 Boardwalk, Oviedo, Florida. I do consulting for Marker 24.
Okay.
Peter Black, owner of Marker 24 Marina and partner with Jan Zanna with Marker 24 Development, 1200 South Banana River Drive, Merritt Island, Florida.
Okay.
So I don't want to take up too much time. I think we've got a fantastic infill piece that has a significant amount of obstacles that we've overcome through a good 10-to-12-month ongoing sessions with staff, and we've resolved these to the four bullet points that Commissioner Loeb outlined. We intend to solve the fourth one, which is the restriction to just sod in the drainage easement with a simple plat note, and that'll cover the deed restrictions that she wanted to. Essentially, the buffer easement is necessary for the marketability of this piece. It really is a significantly smaller building pad that would be required on these four lots, and since the subdivision is really closer to a minor subdivision than it is a major subdivision in lot count, that's why we ask for the permission to do these on just six lots. The other lots in the community don't have this buffer easement condition, and I think it's, falls completely within the standards of the ordinance and on how residential to residential might look. For instance, most of these homes, even with the buffer easement, are still 56-plus feet apart. Nowhere else, if you look at a map of this part of Merritt Island, will you find homes that are further apart than what we're even asking for with this waiver? Prepare to take questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I just want to ask, are these like two-story houses? I mean, next to one-story houses?
Well, single-story houses will always be more marketable than two stories in Florida. So I think that the market conditions, we're always going to try to push a single story. We can get a nice-sized, single-story home on these lots with the buffer easement. I would say at this point, unless there is significant contention from neighbor homeowners that don't want a two-story, which we haven't heard up to this point, we would like the option of being able to build them if we had a customer that felt that they wanted one.
Okay, Commissioner Loeb?
And I, you know, since you bring it up, it's one of those things that seems to be kind of a recurring theme here. We had it with, I think it was Commissioner Pritchett's district earlier today over whether the buffering would handle the higher window or the roof line. You know, if we had folks coming out that were concerned about this, you know, I would be happy to take that into account. I've not heard anything from folks. But that said, just depending on your level of comfort, if it's something that's concerning, one of the things that, in looking at this project that was brought up, was potentially, I guess they have something called a one-and-a-half-story building. Can you kind of give us a quick ...
So if I can call your attention to this plan, this is the rendering. This is about a 2,400-square-foot, single-story house, and the pool was achievable in the backyard by cutting into the back corner of the house. That would be our preferred home for this section, but a one-and-a-half-story home is simply using the roof line of the single story to accommodate living square footage up in the attic, essentially. It's not an attic in that case, it's living square footage, but the roof line is the same. Instead of maybe a 312 pitch, you might be a 6 or 712 pitch, a little steeper roof. That would be our second option, and really, a two-story home would be our last option. And in a two-story home, there's just not the appeal for them. So I think that the market's going to drive single-story or story and a half.
And I'm, you know, my thought is, if it's a concern for you, I can make that a condition of the waiver. If it's not a concern for you, I'll leave it off. If someone raised it as a concern, I would not mind requiring that or restricting it to that. I don't want to restrict them to a straight one-story, because the fact is, if they can make use of the existing height and simply get more value out of the project by making use of that area that's covered by the roof, or I should say, above the regular ceiling height on the first floor, between that and the top of the roof line, you know, I don't see any reason to restrict you all from doing that, but it's up to you, just depending on where your comfort level is. I'm happy to make a motion either way.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, I'm sort of indifferent on it, because nobody's really complained about it, so I don't have an issue with it.
Okay. Yeah, that's all right. What I'll do, given that there's not been any ...
Yeah.
Yeah, given there's not been any objections from the neighbors that I've been made aware of, and I see Fritz there. Have we heard anything since I've been in yesterday? Nothing? Okay, I'm seeing him shake his head in the negative. All right. What I'll do is I'll move to grant the waiver with the following conditions, the three that are listed explicitly on the agenda. I'll just read them out, just for a good record. Monthly maintenance of rear yard drainage be required in perpetuity by the HOA and recorded as such in the covenants and restrictions, that's the first. The second, is mitigation approved by Natural Resources Management Department of any disturbance to the buffer, including preserved and planted trees as a result of future drainage maintenance or replacement that shall be required in perpetuity by the HOA and recorded as such in the covenants and restrictions. Third item is listed on the agenda, is planted and preserved trees in the buffer, shall be preserved for screening purposes. Should a tree die, it shall be replaced with Natural Resources Management Department approval. That shall be required in perpetuity by the HOA and recorded as such in the covenants and restrictions. And then what I mentioned earlier was that there also will have to be a deed restriction indicating no vegetation or improvements of any kind that would impair drainage. And the area that I'm really concerned about with that is the area just beyond the retaining wall where that photo that you're holding up shows the bushes. And then obviously, you mentioned the plat note already, that you'll ensure the HOA has adequate easements to access the area beyond that retaining wall outside the, I guess, in the outer direction of the project, so that it can be maintained in perpetuity.
Thank you.
All right. That's the motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All of us in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
Congrats.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Please try to keep it to one. Thanks.
I didn't realize you lived there.
Close.
Oh, yeah. Item J.2?
This one was continued?
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Item J.3?
Commissioners, this item is an item that the board asked for and to be brought to the board today in a previous board meeting regarding Babcock Street in the area of, in the vicinity of where the Parkway will intersect with Babcock Street. And the desire was that we come, bring back options on what would be done, and it could be done as an alternative idea to the concept of utilizing a million and a half dollars which had been set aside for purposes associated with Babcock Street. So in light of that, we presented to the board three options. One is to enter an interlocal agreement with the city of Palm Bay. I'll speak to that in a moment. The second option was to perform reconstruction and resurfacing activities in an area south of that location down where the bend is and on Babcock Street. And then the third option was to do the same thing, but up on the north end, up close to the overpass over I-95. We have tried to estimate at those two locations approximately how much we believe can be done in terms of reconstruction and resurfacing. The difference between these two is that the more northerly option on that has higher traffic volume on it. The more southerly one, while it has a lower traffic volume, it also has far worse condition on the existing road. Going back to option one, the city of Palm Bay, we have been in discussions at various times with various city staff members over something on the order of five years, certainly more than four years. And the board had set aside this million and a half for purposes in general with Babcock Street and Babcock improvements. The city had indicated a desire for that million and a half, perhaps to be contributed towards improvements at the intersection with the St. John's Heritage Parkway and Babcock Street. To be clear, this location would be the connecting point between the now-existing interchange on I-95 that was constructed by DOT, and then a roadway from that location to Babcock, which is under construction currently by the city of Palm Bay, and then intersecting with Babcock Street and making improvements for turn lanes and a traffic signal at that location. So in effect, there's sort of three projects there. One's finished, waiting for the other two to be completed. There was a great deal of time associated with discussions on this, and quite clearly the premise had been for the million and a half to go towards the intersection was the idea that the city of Palm Bay would accept the road, Babcock Street, when it was widened, they would accept it for maintenance purposes, and, which by the way, also means ownership. The, and we were, were in, finally, after all these years, we had been developing a much more clear and developed interlocal agreement draft, and it's, well, it's not finished, and we indicate that in the agenda report. It's not as fully vetted as we would like, but here it is for your consideration right now. Thursday night, the city council had a council meeting where this was an item on it. They delayed their discussion on it until they would have a, or did have a special meeting, which was last night. And in the meeting last night, there was a number of things which did come up. And the, a couple of things, they, several of the council, if not all of them, indicated that they were not comfortable with the idea of taking Babcock Street in the future for a variety of reasons. The, and again, that was the basic reason for us to be there. Our proposal interlocal, really for our million and a half, county's million and a half, what they get is a better intersection. We also get the road to go to the city in the future, and part of the justification for that is the growth on the road, the amount of traffic volume that that road is going to see, is overwhelmingly going to be as a result of the growth, development growth in the city of Palm Bay in that vicinity, in, close to the intersection. So it also provides an opportunity for us to, or for the city, to obligate themselves to provide funding for, in a limited way, but from their impact fees going forward. The, and we would also obligate ourselves for impact fees that the county would collect with the ability to perhaps include Grant Valkyrie's impact fees and Malabar's impact fees if they so chose to do so. We couldn't guarantee that, and we haven't attempted to get those two cities involved, although there has been communications with them. But certainly, they've not made any commitments, and we haven't asked them to. So the, there was a couple of comments that were of concern in addition to not taking, made by the city council, in addition to not taking the road, or a concern about that. One was the goalposts were moving. I'm not sure what was meant by that. I do know that they had been given an estimate of about three and a half, or a little less than three and a half million dollars. That estimate was not provided by us, it was not created by us, and the, but the plans that have been developed and we believe are permissible at this point do their estimate for that, which we, I don't believe we've received, the actual itemized cost estimate at this stage is at over $7 million, almost $8 million, 7.7. And the, so we don't feel like the goalposts have moved. We've been pretty consistent about what we were asking for and wanted the entire time for actually years now. The, I was asked the question as to, were there other cities that were taking county roads? And the answer to that is most definitely. The city of Cocoa Beach took all the county roads that were in the city of Cocoa Beach. The city of Cape Canaveral took them all. When Grant Valkyrie was created, they took them all. They did not have to, they did. The Rockledge has taken Barnes Boulevard, they just took that road, and when it was widened to four lanes, or at least from Morel Road to I-95. And I believe we've had one with the city of Cocoa as well. So it is not unheard of.
We also, most recently, under this board, City of Melbourne with Babcock Street.
Oh, yes.
Which is a biggie because that's ...
That's correct. And that one wasn't even widening and then taking it, it was just participating in the funding of the repairs and reconstruction of the road. So with that, I, you know, I can answer questions, and if you'd like, and provide any additional information. That's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Loeb?
Yeah, I was going to say, with respect to this, I see at the top of the agenda item, this is right where three and five meet. So frankly, what Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Riznardi want to do with this would carry a lot of weight. I don't think that we should, I'm not saying anyone would otherwise do this, but I just, I don't think it's appropriate that we look at other uses that might parasitize this outside of three and five. If this is something that was intended for that area, I think in all likelihood, we probably ought to keep it in that area. I mean, if that's where the need is, that's where the need is.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I agree with that. I think part of this money is allocated through something, through District Five did in the past. So Commissioner Riznardi, whatever you're comfortable with doing, I support, ma'am. And so.
And I have to say, you know, I spoke with Harry Santiago after his meeting Thursday because, I'm going to be nice, but I was a little disturbed about the discussion that occurred at the meeting, because I think there was so many inaccuracies, you know, or downright misleading information that was provided at that meeting. And I'm sure, Mr. Denninghoff, you can confirm that, correct?
Yes.
And I'm not asking you to, I'm not trying to put you out there, you know, you work for the county, I don't want to put you out there.
No. Commissioners, one of the things that was out there was that in the, the draft version of the interlocal, we had put a condition into it that the city would provide, the intent was that we would have the city provide us with an annual disclosure statement, if you will, as to how they were spending the impact fees, the 100% of the impact fees that they were dedicating 50% of to Babcock. And the whole purpose of that was for transparency, so that there would be a level of awareness regarding that, and so there would just be no concern that money was going someplace else. There's a lot of different ways to handle impact fees, and we wanted to be sure that we understood that. We also committed that we would do the same for them, for the portion that we would be committing.
But the goalpost was that it didn't keep moving. We didn't keep changing the terms. We didn't have an agree, or a proposal from July that we ignored. That was misinformation. There was some discussion, and there's several, like you said, several meetings, several discussions. It's just, my frustration, and I think you know, I mean, I'm sure you couldn't even imagine how many times you and I have talked about this, met about this, talked to staff about this, sat with Frank about this. I mean, we've been beating our heads up against the wall trying to get an agreement. And I'll tell you a little of the history here. At one point, and this is less to do with the intersection, at one point, there was a developer that committed to paying for the entire road from the interchange to the intersection. The entire road. Developer committed to it, not just to me, but to others. And I believe there's even a document that says so, which, you know, if the, if the city council members want to find it, I'm sure it's part of the public record. And then that same developer was going to pay for the intersection. At one time, that developer before the park, or before the interchange was in there, said he was going to pay for the interchange. And Mr. Denninghoff, can you confirm all of that information?
That is correct.
So, I mean, I'm not making it up, it's not rumors, I mean, I was there, I was on council. What happened to the deal is city council happened to the deal. City council allowed the developer out of the deal, or didn't hold them accountable to the deal, or didn't say, "How come you're not committing?" Because the developer directly benefits from where that road goes and from the road itself. So our, the county's concern, and I can speak a little more, I guess candidly than John probably will, the county's concern was they were going to have all these impacts, and the city was going to have all these developments on Babcock, yet the city wasn't going to commit those impact fees to the Bab, to the road ultimately that's being impacted. And as you know, and I think you gave a laundry list of cities that take over the roads, I mean, it's a county road because it was a county road. When cities incorporate, it's only natural that they take over the roads when, and if we can come up with something to help them along. And cities usually are quite open and agreeable to take these roads over, because we're helping them, it's an agreement. This interlocal with this, with this intersection alone, aside from the other drama Palm Bay's got with the interchange and with their road and it not being open, and Representative Fines frustration and all that stuff, aside from all of that, that intersection at the time was supposed to be 1.5 million the county, 1.5 million the developer, which has nothing to do with the county, and 1.5 the city. So it was about roughly, they created a four-and-a-half-million-dollar intersection. I mean, we could have probably done it, what, about $3 million roughly? I mean, I think it was what we were guessing, to put the minimum requirements expandable later, you know, it's not ...
Yeah, early on, we had thought that ...
It's not perfect.
That maybe three is pre-designed, and the conditions were, in our discussions, that it was always going to have to comply with the design standards.
Right.
And there was discussion, in fact, in the, in the city council meeting last night, there was discussion, at least by a constituent, of a, of a two-lane intersection with a stop sign. And we basically said, "That's not acceptable, because that intersection would fail the day it opened."
Correct.
And the, so we have been looking towards a long-term solution that would not have to be reconstructed at a, in a very inefficient way.
But there's a history here, and it's not up to us to decide how that deal fell through for the city as far as what they were getting for their developer. But even after talking to, I talked to Harry Santiago after watching Thursday's meeting with my mouth open and all about, a little bit about what I was hearing, just because I was a little, I mean, I really wanted to go to the meeting, but I didn't want to overstep, and we hadn't addressed it again at commission, so I didn't think it was appropriate. But it was a little upsetting, and then to hear back what, what happened on their special meeting, it's just completely not accurate. So I think the county's waited five years. I think we can, we have, we have projects that are ready and willing to go. It's still keeping it within the city of Palm Bay, but if the city doesn't want to take over Babcock, but has no problem impacting it to a large degree at the benefit of a developer, and a little bit of a residential tax base for them, it's just not fair. But it's, you know, if we're stuck with the road, I'm not going to, it doesn't make finance, fiscal or government sense to go into an interlocal agreement with them. Number one, they don't have the money to pay for the intersection. Harry Santiago confirmed that yesterday. They don't have the money for their portion. Their developer, I guess, is just out, whatever developer committed to do that road, or to do that intersection, his portion, and, and we still don't have an agreement, you know?
So do you have a cut project you'd like to ...
Well, I don't have a cut project, but we have, we have options here, and I actually asked staff for these. I said, "How, what else can we do that we need that's in the area that's sort of close to ready to go, that's, you know?"
Why don't they, I have no interest in any of them. Any one would be ...
But I didn't even, I didn't even care, like, if it was me or John's, or Commissioner Tobias' district. I just said, you know, "To be fair, we'll keep it in the city of Palm Bay." Babcock, I get more, I get numerous complaints about Babcock, like you wouldn't believe. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see that southern, that southern part done. I guess that'd be option three. Because I know we're doing some improvements where there's a little bit more traffic, but there's a lot of people that travel down there, and it's, if you've ever driven down there late at night and it's dark.
So you want one of us to make a motion?
We could.
Motion for option ...
Commissioners, it would be, the south option would be option two rather than three.
What am I looking at, then? Oh, okay, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
You draw that motion.
It's a little tricky to, when you look at the map, but yes.
Yes.
Motion for option number two.
Second. Mr. Denning, or, Mr. Vante?
Yes.
You have something you want to add?
Just very quickly, I just want, so we have the record real clear. We did, in trying to negotiate that interlocal agreement, the city did send us something back in July, and ...
Oh, yeah.
And so I know staff, myself and John spoke to them, I think, multiple times from July. Then we had the hurricane, and then shortly after that, we got a response back to them. And a new issue that came up, that we heard for the first time yesterday, was something in the joint planning agreement from 2016. We were working under the premise that they were comfortable with the interlocal agreement, that we had received a draft from them, you know, previously, and that's what we were working on. So when they, there were issues last night on the joint planning agreement from the city attorney, that wasn't an issue that we had been familiar with or were aware of prior to yesterday, but, but we are, you know, ready to follow the motion.
And I thought I said that, the impression that was given was that they sent us an agreement in July, and we just didn't respond. And that's just not what happened, at all, not even close.
That's correct. We did receive a, what I have characterized as a better-than-I-expected draft version of an agreement. It wasn't in the proper form or format, but it had a lot of good points in it that we had been talking about, including, I think, all of the really important ones. We took that and created a more formalized agreement, which we knew was going to require some of their input. We were in the process of doing that. In fact, I was reviewing a draft of it at the last board meeting, and we went ahead and sent it to them, so that they would have a chance to at least look at it. They moved it to get it in front of their council, which I appreciate. The current city staff has done a much better job as far as moving things along.
Suzanne Sherman, correct?
That's correct. Suzanne has been fantastic.
She's wonderful, she's an asset.
But there is one other thing that I did want to make sure my boss is raising his finger.
Well, also that we made it clear to them that that was not a take-it-or-leave-it draft that they received.
Right.
That's correct. That question came up Thursday night, is this a take-it-or-leave-it? And it was never intended to be a take-it-or-leave-it. The, we're looking for an actual partnership, or we had been looking for a partnership that was going to move forward collectively to eventually result in a widened Babcock Street.
But we also expose ourselves if they can't come up with the money to do the intersection, because if we have even like a $4-million intersection, say, or a $3-million intersection, our million and a half is going to sit there until they either have the money or until ...
And that does bring up an interesting point. We have de-linked, if you will, the, the ... the interlocal agreement and the issuance of a permit for the intersection improvements. We have not made this interlocal, and we weren't trying to hold the permit hostage, so to speak. The, one of the things that we had consented to was that they could build a two-lane road as a temporary road, get the connection from the interchange while they finished the rest of the construction. And there has been a concern that's been raised, that perhaps they get that far along for the amount of money that they maybe have, and then maybe they don't pursue it to completion. I don't know what we do in that situation, and I don't, I haven't thought of a way to address that in any what I would call legally-sufficient sort of way. It's very difficult to do that. I think we would probably wind up having to file suit for violation of the condition of our permit, and then, you know, that's never a good thing.
Well, hopefully it doesn't come to that. But at least we can say, at least if the commission agrees-
I've been assured that that's not where they're headed. They've been very forthcoming. Suzanne has been, as I said, excellent to work with.
I've worked with her before, and she's amazing.
So, I'm, I doubt that's where that'll go, but on the one hand, but on the other hand, if they don't have the money, then I don't know what happens, so.
Yeah. And I'm not saying they won't eventually have it. I'm just telling you, I asked Harry. I said, "Do you have the money?" And he said, "No." So, I can only go off of that. And like I said, I, I don't know what happened to their agreements, but that intersection, or that, that road from the, from the, from 95 to Babcock Street was committed to by a developer to pay for it. Then that intersection was committed to, I think, I think developed, didn't the developer even come up with a couple concepts, the different concept plans? It wasn't us.
I think I've seen-
One or two?
A dozen different-
A dozen, right? And so, everything's changed, and now the developer's out, the city doesn't have the funds. We're sitting here with a million and a half, and it's been five years. So, the intention was good to build the right, the right intersection when all the players were, were committed. But that money's sitting there, and it's, we have bad roads. So, I mean, we can't do as much as I would like, but I would like to, I would really like to at least do some of Babcock. It's like a washboard down there at night.
Oh, yeah, it's terrible.
And it's more dangerous at night especially, because it's dark and it's crummy road. So, I think doing some of that, at least will, will, will make some people's ride a little bit more pleasant. Anyway, all right. So, we have a motion and a second? Did we get a second?
Yes, Commissioner Smith, I believe, seconded it.
All right, great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, you have direction. Thank you.
So, is, I guess the message that we're sending work with us, or we'll make the decisions ourselves?
And I apologize, I apologize, Mr. Denninghoff, if I put you on the spot. I just wanted people to understand that I wasn't spreading rumors, that those are actual things that happened. Thank you. All right.
I was hoping you'd name names.
Well, I'm sure you can figure it out if you haven't figured it out already. Okay. Where are we at, guys?
J-5.
J-5.
I can probably get us through this one.
I have an older agenda, that's why, because I printed it out too early. So, here's the new one, okay.
Yeah, if you want, I can, I can make short order this. I was going to make a fuss about it, but I did find out from Peter, who I think may have just stepped out, oh, there he is, that this did previously go out to RFP. That was my only concern. So, given that this, that actually did happen, I'll go ahead and move to approve J-5.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, or seconded by both commissioners? No. Commissioner Pritchett, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. All right, public comments. Ms. Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. Just wanted to give you an update on the dredging. We previously requested a delay on that until the evaluation of the FUD site was done. So, a year ago, we consulted with a retired Navy munitions officer. He told us that he was concerned about the period of time when the long-range proving grounds were operating, the potential for chemical neurological weapons potentially being, having bulk disposal in that area. I was watching a FUDs video and trying to learn more about our FUD site, and the, the thing that the Corps of Engineers looks for when they're looking for potentially chemical weapons is arsenic. And so, with high levels of arsenic, if we have 22.6 at a head of canal, what is it, up gradient when it comes down out there? So, that, that's a concern I just want to make you guys aware of that I've talked to DEP about. The other issue I, I wanted to bring up is a request for an impact study beachside. We're seeing a very big uptick in, in traffic. The, regarding a zoning change request in our area, I found out that the level of service, the LOS, between Ocean and Berkeley is a D, that the level of service coming across the Pinata Causeway is D. I talked to DOT yesterday. The A1A cannot be expanded. So, there's a lot of development being planned by Satellite Beach right now that impacts everybody else because they're in the middle. I would like to ask you guys to consider something like an umbrella planning idea where you take a concept of what you have for development, and then cities can't exceed that. They can come to you and ask for requests. They can do whatever development they want within the constraint of what that umbrella is, or else we may just, you know, we're going to be impacted. They have four 85-foot towers they're putting in. Oceana hasn't been occupied yet. Montecito, they have a lot of development. They're planning on moving all the commercial development up to A1A corridor. They have so much they're planning to change, and already we're at level D. And I don't know, I've asked for reports on the, on the, I've asked DOT for corridor study for A1A. I have not had a response back on that. But if we could get an impact study, our water has coliform, the most recent testing on the water came back with coliform. The water issue for concurrency isn't going to be resolved until the pipes go across Pinata, which will fix the water issues beachside. We have low water pressure and coliform in our water, and then we have traffic issues. So, I think there needs to be an impact study. Any questions?
Commissioner Loeb?
See, this is a D4 item. I'm, I'm happy to, to support whatever Commissioner Smith wants to do with respect to this. If you think it's a wise idea, if we need to move some resources around him, happy to make it happen.
I would rather talk to City of Satellite Beach and get their input. Because they're making, they have, I assume they've done traffic studies and, and studies of growth. So, rather than us just jump in and start telling them what we think and what we should do, we should at least give them the courtesy of a response.
That's fair, yeah. Well, I'll just keep the, the offer open. If you find out something from them and they want us to jump in, I'm happy to, to help in any way I can.
Yeah, I'll give them a call.
Thank you.
Mr. Tovey?
Charles Tovey, Third Rail, 2555, Melbourne, Florida. Put on my card, and first, I wanted to thank Commissioner Smith and his district for the increase in vacuuming, it looks like, especially before the rains hit, and now, and appreciate that. And I wanted to speak on, I changed my, my speaking today, but I wanted to speak on the speed bumps. And I understand the protocol. I just want to emphasize the importance of the speed bumps. As personal pertinence to me being a speaker, it has none. But as a teenager, I was going to college, and I was coming home from a date, and a vehicle with extremely bright lights that aren't normal and regular traffic, well, they run me off the road, and I went into a coma. And the doctor and nurse were talking about amputation. I woke up out of my coma, and since then, I've had years of recuperating and getting off opiates and heroin and Dilata and Demerol, and had made a lot of wrong choices at that time, and there was no support programs for that. And I want to see if we can get the governor-approved opiate team, and I want to see if we can get some people in hospitals with the help for people that are being released for pain management, and give them the option to nip it in the bud before they get caught up in a situation. And I've, I'm a miracle, and thank you, Lord. I've surpassed a lot of obstacles. And then the other thing was about the wetlands. My property never flooded before they moved and did all the development that they did, and it floods now, which is okay in a way. And I want to say that the bald eagle, the sandhill cranes, African gray, the screech owl, barn owl, osprey, or the rosette spoonbill, the ospreys, hummingbirds, I said African gray already, coral snake, indigo, Burmese python, skinks, chameleons, spotted tree frogs, turtles, box turtles, and regular tortoise, flying squirrel, meerkat, deers, raccoon, possums, and a variety of other things that I've witnessed on my property. And it, what is now Palm Shores was a significant keystone in the balance of Beavard County and the lagoon as well, and a lot of other things I want to say, but I don't have time to say them at this time. And I appreciate everybody's acceptance of me and their respect, and I apologize for any rudeness or any kind of misconduct I might have. It's a product of my environment and a symptom of my impairments and other things. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. Oops.
Briefly.
Mr. Loeb?
I was just going to say, real, real briefly, and I'll just tell our county attorney not to get nervous, because I know we just had an executive session. I'm not discussing anything that happened or didn't happen there. But I, I think if you give us several months, we may be in a different position with respect to what we're able to do to help folks that have opioid addiction. So, just bear with us a little while, and we may be in a different position down the road with, with respect to how we're able to, to address that.
Okay. On to board reports. Mr. Bate?
I have one item for the, we're looking for board permission to appeal a FEMA Public Assistance Eligibility Determination Letter that relates to the Seaway Bridge. So, we're looking for the board's permission to appeal that decision.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve the appeal of the FEMA in regards to the bridge, seconded by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
Just on that same topic, I was, I was going to say, I've spoken with, with Eden. I know that some of the legwork, at least the real initial stuff, has, has already been done, which is good. So, they're, they're in a position to move forward with that. The one thing I would call to commissioners' attention is that the chance that that's going to be successful realistically is rather slim. I think over the last roughly three or so FEMA appeals that we did, we had at least partial success in one of them and no success at all in the others. And that said, the assistant county attorney who worked on that, I don't believe is with the county any longer. So, not to say that we don't have a eminently capable staff, but realistically, I would not hold out too much hope that that's going to work. If it does, wonderful, I think it's worth the effort. But I just don't want anyone to have an unrealistic expectation that that's going to be a funding source that it probably will not be.
Maybe we should get, hire a lawyer lobbyist from Tallahassee. Sorry. Sorry, too soon? Okay. All right, Ms. Bentley?
No report.
I'm glad you found humor in that, Ms. Bentley, unless you're just humoring me. Ms. Pritchett?
No report.
Mr. Tobias is not here. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention to everyone the gratitude that I feel for the folks that have stepped up and made donations and, and helped us with the Real Men Wear Pink campaign to raise funds, and the deputies wearing their pink badges. They had to buy those, and that money went to Real Men Wear Pink, too. And we've even had some people on our commissioner staffs that have reached out to us and made contributions. So, thank you to everyone, and for the guys and girls that wear pink.
Okay.
Say, I don't have much, but no, the only reason that I contributed is I figured you might let me get a pass for, for not wearing pink if I did it that way. Thought that'll, you know, if I can buy my, my way into not wearing pink, I'm happy to do that.
Subject to bribes, you got it.
There you go. But, no, I appreciate everyone's patience. Today was a long meeting, and, you know, we certainly have done everything we reasonably could to, to keep it moving. But I see, Fritz, are you, you good? Six? Oh, yes, that's right, thank you. Okay, so, I want to gloat a little bit, or actually, I can invite Frank to gloat a little bit about our, our road mileage and what we've paved versus what our expectations were. Can you speak real briefly about that, Frank?
Sure. We celebrated with Public Works, actually Friday, their assistant director and their director, with the staff that was involved in doing road repaving this past year. We had, as you might recall, we made, two years ago, a commitment of doing 55 miles per year. We readjusted that to try to keep the road paving ahead in terms of roads that would not go into reconstruction at a higher cost. And so, we committed this year to do 61 miles of road repaving, and the staff actually accomplished over 70 miles, miles in Public Works. They got 70 miles plus of roads redone, as well as doubling the amount of reconstruction roads that we were anticipating. Some of that was due to a little bit lower cost in Nashville than we had anticipated, but it was also from them penny-pinching and trying to do the best they could, and mobilizing and getting a good amount of roads each time they mobilize. So, they did a tremendous job, and they set the bar pretty high for us to try to move in the future. As you know, we've committed moving forward this year in the budget to do 63 miles of roads. So, we are anxious to make sure that we honor all the commitments we've made to the board and board members.
Thank you, sir.
May I add real quick?
Of course.
Want to give out a shout-out to Susan Jackson and all her work on that. She's just been a real-
Oh, she's stellar.
She's, she's a champion, and her communication skills blow me away when she's dealing with things. And I'm also, I was excited to find out, we have between six and nine million dollars in reserves that we can probably apply soon that we didn't know about. I found out about it yesterday. So, looking forward to that report of how we can increase mileage, mileage next year.
Yeah, Susan Jackson's been great. She's like Johnny on the spot with the, with responding. Because we get a lot of complaints, as you can imagine. Like I said, Babcock is one of them. But, you know, we've had some other issues, and some people aren't, aren't quite as cordial. And she's, she's always very, sticks to the facts. This is what it is. This is the plan, you know, and we'll update you. She's really great. So, thank her for us. All right, so for me, for my business, and I'm not going to go into a long to-do about it, but I wanted to talk to the commission about the possibility of bus shelters just where we need them. Not like in every single stop, obviously, but we definitely have a dire need in some areas for shelters, not just in my district, but in all of our districts. I spoke with Paul Alfry, and this is before, this is before the last commission meeting, or I should say it was the day of the last commission meeting, that I was going to bring it. But then the, the intersection thing came up, and I didn't want to bring up two things, and I didn't want to bring up a nice thing while after going after the, the thing that was a little contentious, so. But anyway, I spoke and reached out to Paul Alfry, and he actually brought it to his board, the possibility of, you know, and I know we have some agreements, but like if we put the shelters in, because there's grant funds available for that, thank you, Jim, I mean, for some of that, not for all of it, but there's grant monies available in CDBG and, and funding out there for us to put those shelters up. But if the cities take them over, sort of like our roads, right, or if they, if they handle the maintenance on them, then that would be great. And Melbourne was very agreeable to the idea, the city council on Melbourne. So, it's just, I wanted to get my feeler out there before I brought it to commission to find out what kind of response we were going to get from the municipalities before.
Well, that's a subject near and dear to my heart.
Yeah.
When I took office, I think Jim told me, we had 600 some, we were short like 600 some shelters.
There's nine, 900 and some bus stops, almost 1,000. There's like 66 or 72 shelters, county-wide.
Right. So, in the course of all that, I spoke with Sheriff Ivy, and he committed to building the shelters for us at a substantial savings over what we can buy. But it just never moved forward because we haven't had a funding source.
Right.
But it was a fraction of, what are, what are we looking at, like 6,000 bucks per shelter?
Our shelters that we purchase, somewhere 5,500, 7,500, and then installation can run 8,000 to 18 to $25,000.
So, he said he can build them for about 3,000 to 3,500. So, that's a $3,000 per shelter.
Well, as long as they're up to standard, I don't have an issue with that at all. And I appreciate the report on this, but-
Well, it's simple. He said, you know, what they do is they, they build the first one, and they create the jigs, and then they just make all the cuts the same. So, it's something to pursue, something to look into.
Yeah.
And that, that means if you can get, if you can buy 20 shelters, now you can buy 40.
Yeah, if it works. But I imagine the engineering, and they have to be weather, and they have to be, like, there's like so many specifications.
Well, we did all that. We already did all that.
Yeah.
I had, I got specifications from the shelter companies that we were dealing with. I gave the specs to the sheriff and his people.
Why is Jim shaking his head? Oh.
No, when you were discussing the engineering, you know, to be, whatever it is now, 150 or 100 and whatever miles per hour, but you have breakaway if a car hits them, they have to be engineered to those levels and everything.
Right.
Right. So, we might have to do that again, because five years ago, we didn't have the 150 mile an hour. I don't think we had that. I don't think we had that stipulation.
It's a real high number.
So, could we use the sheriff's department to install them? I mean, is that where the savings would be? I mean...
I haven't seen the design.
They build them and install them.
The, the savings would be just on the purchase of the shelters, it wouldn't be on the installation, and, the shelters are, I hate to say it's the cheap part, but they're the cheap part of the installation, is buying the shelters, getting them into the ground, getting the permitting, and make sure we have the sidewalk and the ADA connections with them.
Yeah, that's, that's the concern. I mean, we're looking north of 20,000 to put in the average shelter.
Yeah.
And even to put in a bench, you still have a lot of the same expenses in installing them, but it's funny, I don't know if, if either Madam Chair has bugged my office or, or bugged Jim's office, but I, I talked with them not too long ago about the same topic. So, I, I promise, we weren't chatting about it outside.
I think everybody's on the same page, that's a good thing.
Yeah, as, as a follow-up, Frank and I spoke to Shannon, city manager of City of Melbourne, and I talked to, spoke with Transit the day after, they're getting some stuff together for them. Transit already, I don't know if you want to call it on the books, but they're working with the Vera Company, Myra, and Satellite Beach are those, like, the next set to get shelters, and so if Melbourne wants some, it would be the next fiscal year.
Wonderful. There's nothing worse than seeing someone standing outside in the rain or in the sun. That's awful.
I got a text just last week of that.
Yes, that's exactly what I was thinking of, like, an old person with their little bag, and they're, it's raining.
It's interesting, though, because I, you know, I didn't know what all was involved in terms of maintenance for a bus shelter until I, I sat down and had the conversation, but, I mean, it's everything from removing gum to keeping the glass clean...
Trash.
To making sure nothing's broken. There's, there's a lot, trash, cleaning that and collecting that, but, you know, between the right-of-ways and easement concerns that you have in the municipalities, it's not, it's not, oh gee, let's put one there, we put it there, and that's, that's the be-all and end-all. So, there's, there's a lot more that goes into it than I think a lot of people realize, but, you know, I would certainly be supportive of, of adding either benches or shelters anywhere in the county. I think it's a good idea.
There are some, some places that have shelters that are actually inadequate, because they have such a large, I was in West Melbourne, across the street from my office, and there was, and every time I go by there, there's three times the amount of people that fit in that shelter.
Yeah.
And they're like packed in there like sardines, and the rest are, now, I know they have a lot of moving traffic, but still...
And, and that, that one was put in under developer's agreement with City of West Melbourne and Hammock Landing, so.
So, I'll talk to Mayor Rose, say, "Hey."
Yeah.
Since we're on this discussion, City of Titusville got aggressive with shelters, and I think the last couple of years, they put up some, they're nice.